Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Regular Meeting at Waterbury Arts and Magic School.
For some memorials.
In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Committee who have passed away. John P. Berry, retired from teaching science at Kennedy High School, passed away on November 12th, 2019. Margaret Rice, former Department of Education employee, passed away on November 15th, 2019. William McGinty Jr., former painter with the Department of Education, passed away on November 16th, 2019. Let us remember and recognize the service, dedication, and passion, both to the students and to the city of Waterbury and those who cared about this evening.
Commissioner Awad, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I would lead this. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone.
Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Pagano?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Tom Vanstone?
Still present.
President Brown?
Present.
Communications, Commissioner Sweeney?
Motion to receive and place on file copies of communications as listed.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries, thank you. Number five, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2019 workshop and September 19, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you.
Recognize the student.
All right. Do we have people who want to speak?
Make a motion to suspend the regular business here for a couple?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Okay, welcome. This is the public speaking portion of the board. Richard Wood. What's her name again?
Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury. And first, welcome back, everyone. Very happy to see all of you sitting where you are. And I'm sitting over here, I'm very happy where I am. But I thought I'd share some things with you about the Gettysburg Address competition. We have not heard anything further from you about any additional schools that are going to compete. We'd like to see that put forward in place, a little bit stronger. I know that's not always easy, but if you give an order to a principal at the price that we pay them, they can be expected to do the job. Because we have a directive, I believe, from the second floor of City Hall to take a more active civic role in our curriculum. And the Gettysburg Address is a fulcrum and can be used as part of that plan in the civics process. I think none of you were there at Runnymede, I don't believe. Anyone at Runnymede? No? I wasn't either. But the Magna Carta was formed there, and that's the nucleus of part of our democracy. And the republic part of it came from Greece, I believe. The thing is, we have to teach this to our children, and one of the things we have to teach them is to participate here. We have to have the schoolchildren brought here as part of their learning process. We have the same problem at the Board of Alderman, which is the nucleus of our democracy. This is where it hinges on moving forward, where you have a discussion about anything, a disagreement, or an idea, or a better idea. Like we were talking earlier together about what we're all going to speak about. And I said, "I was going to speak about something else." So I changed it to this because of what we discussed earlier. The thing is, we have to realize, we have to take the curriculum and manage it to end result, not just of learning the three Rs, which they don't learn the three Rs anymore. They come up with Qs. Qs don't exist, really. But they can't read. I was at DCF today trying to placate a client who had an argument with a worker. And the thing is, she was given something to read. She said to me, "Could you read this to me?" I said, "What do you mean, read it to you? You went to Crosby High School, I went to your graduation." She could not read this agenda, literally. And she had a certificate saying she was a high school graduate. And it's not that we have bad teachers, we have great teachers. But we have to organize ourselves to work with them. We also have to organize the parents. The parents have to be part of the curriculum. And that means we have to go to where the parents go, which are churches, synagogues, and mahjid. If we go to these religious leaders and say, "We need help with this. It is your obligation to do, to help us with this," they will. But until you ask them, they won't. I was doing a food distribution at a mosque a couple years ago, and we were running short of funds. And I said, "Well, we're going to have to go ask somebody else to help us." And they said, "Oh, they'll never help." I said, "Wait a minute." I was a fundraiser for the IRA 40 years ago, believe me. That wasn't so hard. But I said, "So I went to the mosque on Raymond Street on Ramadan, they have a dinner, like we have a holiday feast." And I said, "Hey, do you need help with this program? Would you mind helping?" And Vitar, who was the president of the mosque at the time, said, "Absolutely. What do you need? How much?" And he showed up at every, the last Saturday of every month for a couple of years. And that is the type of things we can do. If you ask the leaders, they'll come. They'll help us formulate the things that we need to have done, but you can't do it by yourselves. It's got to be a team effort. The entire city has to be realized that educating our children is a joint effort. It isn't just, "Oh, well, we'll sign them that classroom, or we'll hire this teacher because they're tall," or whatever. But that's essentially what we have to look forward to. And something else we can do, Baltimore has a brand-new museum. Beautiful, with overflowing of artifacts. Why not give them a call? Borrow some artifacts. Have a display here. Have our children see some part of their history. When you, Madam, when you call them, ask them if they have relics from Marie LeBeau and Jean Laffitte. According to family legend, they're relatives of mine. But if you send anything up, I want first look at it. The thing is, if we do a display of artifacts going back into our history, then we'll have something, another way of teaching them without having to make it painful. Dominus Fabriscum, peace be with you. Enjoy the rest of the evening, slowly.
Thank you. Sandy Genoa?
It's Sandy Genoa, thank you. Before I present before you, I just want to put it out there for your ears to hear. I was discouraged to be here today by family and friends. And the reason for that discouragement is, I was told, "You've spoken before the board before, and they don't listen. They continue to do what they choose to do, and they don't take into consideration the feelings of the parents and the families that are representing." And that's scary. That was the support that I had tonight. Having said that, good evening, members. My name is Sandy Genoa, and I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer here in Waterbury with a child in our special education department on the elementary school level. This is not my first time presenting with our Board of Education, and it's very discouraging to stand before you here tonight. Serious attention needs to be paid to the fact that our special education department is failing our students. I've spoken to you before with my concerns, and I've sat here in this forum and listened to so many students, as well as other families, reaching out to you with their concerns as well. I'm standing here before you tonight, representing every student, not just my own, in our special education department. You are the representation of our city and our education system, and yet our special education students, this small group within a grand system, is being shuffled through with unrealistic report cards, goals, and programming. My nonverbal 11-year-old child, who is in the fifth grade, who cannot read or write, is an honor roll student, achieving 85s across the board in science, math, social studies, reading, and penmanship. This is a joke. From a parent's perspective, when you receive a diagnosis that your child has special needs, no matter that diagnosis, there is little to no support unless you are an aggressive parent. There is no training on how to read a 504 or an IEP. There is no breakdown, there is no understanding unless you are aggressive and you dig and you ask the questions. And if you have a language or education barrier, it becomes even harder. That is a huge percentage of our students in the special education program. A lot of our families are Spanish-speaking, and they don't understand what the 504 or the IEP means. Our schools have parent liaisons that work within our regular education department, sporting our families, at PPTs and sharing information that benefit our regular education students. Yet our schools have no special education parent liaison that supports them or represents them. Someone who could share information on programs available to our families, such as Special Olympics, specialized swimming programs, bowling programs, or even a breakdown in our schools. Bucks Hill started last year the first PPT for special ed families, and it fell apart for lack of support. We, as families, should have our own liaisons to reach out to who can help us to navigate this overwhelming and sometimes confusing environment. This should not be a priority, this should be a priority and not a suggestion. It's easy for the board to nod heads and change programming based on what you believe works. It's much easier than it is to listen to our families. It's easier to make decisions behind closed doors than it is to actually go into the schools and see how the programs are failing our students. An example of failed programming is how our autism program in the city no longer exists. The CBL classrooms that should support our autistic students are just a label. There is no CBL learning. The definition of CBL is center-based learning, meaning that teachers group materials for one type of student, for one type of subject, together according to the Card Center for Child Development of Lifelong Learning. These centers are organized based on content or activity areas. The basis for this learning is to bring the learning to the level of the child involved. I want you to think about that for a moment. It's not about bringing the learning into the classroom of special needs students, it's about bringing the learning to the level of the child involved. That means that if my 11-year-old child is working at a preschool level, the learning should be brought down to his level. And I use my son as an example, but he's not who I'm representing here today. I'm representing all of the students in our special ed department. Our CBL classrooms are overcrowded with all types of special needs students. And that's not a bad thing, but in reflection to an autistic child, it is. The classrooms are too disruptive, they are too loud, they are too chaotic, and it makes learning very difficult. This environment being disruptive is ineffective for our autistic students. Our children need a calming environment with less distractions and more support. Homework that comes home from this program is not conducive to our children's needs, nor does it meet a lot of the needs of our students. And I have an example I'd like to share with you. I said earlier, "My child cannot read or write." I'm going to pass this paperwork around. This is the homework assignment that comes home for him on a weekly basis. Now, mind you, this is a little boy who does not read or write, and he's expected to fill these out and complete this homework.
If you could please summarize?
Absolutely. And by summarizing, would you?
Your time is up, so?
Oh, sure. I'm almost finished. As representatives of our education system, it is your responsibility to make sure that programming represents our students. It's your responsibility as our Board of Education to have appropriate supports for our teachers. Most importantly, it is your responsibility to support our students in special education with effective programming that is realistic to their diagnosis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Charles Mceliss.
Good evening. My name is Charles Mceliss, and I ran for the Board of Education. I didn't quite get there, but I still like to contribute. I'm here for positive reasons. I was a teacher at Waterbury for 45 years. I taught 32 years for the city of Waterbury. 27 of those years were at Wallace Middle School, and I did 13 years at Our Lady of Monte Carmel. So before you, you have a syllabus of things that I think need to happen in the city of Waterbury for Waterbury to move ahead in education. First of all, you need to believe that everyone likes to blame the parents. If you don't have an answer to a question, well, it's the parents. It's not the teacher, it's not the administration, it's the parents, believe me. 45 years of teaching, it's not the parents. It's a school system that's not working. And, you know, we need to turn that around. So I have a whole list of ideas here that would take me two hours to elaborate on, but I'm just going to go through them very quickly. And priorities, one through seven. I think the biggest problem we have in Waterbury, and it goes back to when I started teaching, is that you have administrators that really don't have the expertise. They've taken courses, but they haven't been in the classrooms, quite a few of them. They haven't been, they don't have the highest standards in the classroom. And I know this for a fact because I've been in education for so long, and I've seen the people that went into administration for different reasons, but for most of them, I don't think it really worked out. And I think that's why a lot of the schools are failing. The second thing I have here is middle school. I taught in middle school for 27 years. And I remember when it first started, we had a lot of really bright kids there, and everybody was energetic about it. But because, and I attribute it to, not just because it was a middle school, I just think that learning wasn't there. Parents realized it, they left Waterbury, and now we have what we have. And I believe the biggest problem is that we need to convert these middle schools to K through eight schools. And I think we can do that. Because the middle schools do not work. The worst things happen in the middle schools. I remember the high school saying, you know, "We're getting kids from your middle school, but they're not on grade level." And that started a long, long time ago. So something needs to be done with those middle schools. They're a disaster, and they should have never been created. Third, I think we need to begin the school day much later. Last time I was here, I passed out articles from the New York Times explaining why older kids should not be going to school before 8:45 a.m. California, they just instituted where next year, kids are going to be going to school much later throughout the state. It's happening all across the country. I'm up at 6:30 in the morning sometimes, and I'm watching these kids walk to the bus stop. It's freezing out there. You know, I challenge everybody to get out there, 6:30 in the morning, and walk around and see what our, why a lot of our kids aren't going to school, why our kids are not awake, they're sleeping at school. Some of them are even wearing pajamas to school. I know that for a fact. And that has to change. We need to start school later because I think you're going to get better results from the kids. Number four, bilingual education needs to go. I've never heard of any ethnic group that had to go to a bilingual class to learn English. It doesn't happen anywhere else, but yet it happens to our Puerto Rican students. And these kids are in bilingual. By the time they get mainstream, they're so far behind, they end up dropping out. That has to come to an end. To be honest with you, I think that's a form of segregation. And we know segregation is, but this is kind of like reminds me of it, where these kids spend time together, some classes are actually taught in Spanish, I know that for a fact. And these kids are within their own group. They don't intermingle with any other kids. When I was at Wallace Middle School, they came to our school the first year, it was sometime maybe in the early 80s, it was transferred to Wallace Middle School. And these kids were, the teachers were phenomenal, don't get me wrong, I loved it, teachers were fantastic. But the kids did not intermingle with any other kids, and they spoke Spanish to each other all the time. And guess where they, you know where they ended up, I don't have to tell you that. So bilingual has to come to an end. As far as parents, parents aren't involved, let's start some workshops for parents at the beginning of the school year. So we let the parents know what their responsibilities are and how they can help their kids at home. You know, I think if we started that, then we wouldn't have, like at Tinker School, there's actually a line that I found out. When I went, I went around to different schools when I was running for a candidate, and I saw the teachers standing here, and I saw parents standing there, I thought that was kind of odd. And then an aide at Our Lady of Monte Carmel said to me, "That's intentional. Look at, there's a line there."
Time.
Okay, very quickly, two other things. I think we need to have a health curriculum in grades five and eight. When I was at Our Lady of Monte Carmel, I had a health curriculum there, it was very successful. Lastly, I would think it'd be a great idea to give every single kid a library card from when they enter school. It could even be an ID with their picture on it. To encourage the kids to start reading. Education starts at home, it doesn't start in school. We need our kids to read more because if they can't read, they can't write. These are just some of the ideas I have. I think if Waterbury institute these ideas, you would see us moving along very quickly. And I want to thank the superintendent, I think she's doing a phenomenal job because she has a big thing to take, a big challenge of Waterbury. And you don't accomplish what she's accomplished in one year, two years. It's going to take a long time, and we have to be patient. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Parisi?
My name is Joseph Parisi. I'm the, I live at 929 Boyd Street Extension in Waterbury. I'm now the president of the Willby High School Alumni Association. In August of this year, I came to the board and requested that the Willby High School Swimming Pool be named after Gilman Seer. It's 90 days since that time I've been notified to come, and I want to thank the board for approving that. It's a great honor. Gilman Seer is here today, and I want to say thank you to the Board of Education for approving that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Gil Seer.
Hi, good evening. Just wanted to thank the Board of Education for this award. I'm deeply honored and that you recognized my body of work, my athletic body of work so many years ago. So I'm deeply appreciative of that. And I would also like to say that I want to thank the city of Waterbury for having a YMCA so that in the after-school hours and a boys' club, so that in those critical after-school hours, I was able to go to a place, find a sport, and have a coach there that provided a great foundation for me to move on to Willby and have a successful career there. So I'm deeply appreciated, appreciative of this honor. Thank you very much.
Margaret O'Brien?
Good evening, Margaret O'Brien, 22-4 Malone Drive, Waterbury. First, I want to congratulate the commissioners who have been re-elected to our board. Being a special ed advocate, I have known many of you for many years and many of your prior predecessors who have been commissioners. I come forward to you tonight reminding you of why you have been voted back by the people. Because they know you, they trust you, they know that you're going to serve them at the best of your ability in this district with their children as students here throughout our many schools. You're here to show that you care, to want to provide for the best educational programs that we can for our students, and to help support our great teachers along with Dr. Ruffin. That means you need to read everything placed in front of you. If it's not there, then ask. Don't let it go by unknown. Dot your i's, cross your t's very carefully. Question the finances when they are placed on the table. And remember, as I have stated many other times, that our Kinetic Alliance monies are dwindling, and they're not going to be there forever. See what the salaries are that are being used with this money, and is that position really important at this time? Because once the state ends those grants, and it's going to happen, then those salaries will be gone in those positions. Secondly, many of my clients these days are from Waterbury, and many are with children of autistic students. Of late, much of our staff in the special ed department has drastically changed, from ABA teachers leaving after the beginning of the year to the top of our fold. When an ABA teacher leaves a classroom after being there for many years, gaining the trust of their students, their love, it becomes a major challenge. Everything changes. You may not see it as an adult, but the children do. They feel it. With those changes comes behavioral changes, then end up being at home. This, then, is not a great environment then for our children or our students, who need consistency, love, every day to get through. Now, when it comes to a new director of special ed, I truly hope you will listen to the needs of Dr. Ruffin, and maybe listen to the parents that voted you back in along with many other parents. The next director needs to be one who will hold the laws of our state and federal for special needs children accountable, and his personnel accountable. Who cares about the needs of our children? Who care, the person needs to care about the needs of our children in the schools regardless of their IEP diagnosis. Each child is important. Who can communicate well with the heart to the parents? Because it's the parents that knows their child better than anyone. Transitioning our children does not and should not take place in the later years, but educating and teaching from the youngest forward, preparing them through their stages, through their level of learning. In the 32 years I have worked with only two special education directors who had the heart and the understanding of what our students needed. I can truly say Waterbury has lacked in this area for many years, not just with the students, but with the parents of the students. How does a teacher send home an assignment for an autistic student who has trouble communicating and cannot hold a pencil? How does a teacher get to show schoolwork for that child who cannot write or read it, but does it for the student? That child is not learning. So commissioners, I challenge you to finally ask more questions, listen more intently, visit the schools. Forget about what party you belong to, but start to work together. Place yourself in the shoes of all parents, but especially the shoes of a special ed child's parents, as I have had to do for the past 20-plus years with my own, when I work with my clients, the parents. Because if you do ask, it makes you human. If you don't, then you're fright to the parents, and they won't come forward.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak who didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Seeing none, could I have a motion, please?
Could I have a motion to suspend the regular business?
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent Announcements?
Thank you, Commissioner, and good evening. We have several wonderful announcements to share with everyone, and I'm certain I won't be able to list them all. There are at least three of major attention that I would like to celebrate with you. Our Reed School Governance Council Book Swap opened for business. We were very excited. It was a book drive held in October through the generosity of the school community and dozens of books. dozens of books were collected. Students are able to choose to take home books throughout the week and add them to their nightly reading log. The initiative inspires to strengthen the bond between home and school while also encouraging reading among all students. Kennedy High School Junior's short stories to be published in the Young Writers USA. We're very happy to celebrate that. The group received Certificates of Excellence for their short stories. There were more than ten thousand entries submitted nationally, and the students at Kennedy, their work was selected based on creativity, perception, and imagination. And we're very excited and very proud of them. Also, I had the honor of being invited and attending the Willby JROTC Ball, their military ball, it's the Marine Corps Military Ball. I was so honored that the students, along with First Sergeant Xavier, came to my office, presented the invitation to me. But I was mostly impressed by the attending and spending some quality time with the students. They had a wonderful celebration of their two-hundred-and-forty-fifth birthday of the Marine Corps. They were so professional and honorable in their presentation, and I could not share enough positives about these young people, and very encouraged by the direction that our nation will be led by what I saw in the one-hundred-and-twenty-plus members who belong to the ROTC program at Willby High School. I'm sure that you have a presentation there, there are photos, but I'd like to recognize Cadets Major Jason Beth Massant, Captain Javier Soto, Sergeant Major Taylor Saunders, and First Sergeant Xavier as they came to present, and also, I'm certain, very, very proud of their organization. And I also had a fun time dancing with the students. I'd like to congratulate the Board of Education on being recipients of the Board of Recognition by Cabe. I'm not surprised, because you are all very dedicated, and congratulations on having received that honor at the conference last week. So congratulations to a well-deserved award to our Board of Education.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Ruffin? Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make note to one area that we usually pass by pretty quickly, and that is the superintendent's notifications to the board later on the agenda. And under fourteen point seven, sixty-six of your employees have greater education and graduated, probably over the summer, seems to be effective in August. Sixty-six are continuing their education, and that is for our children, that they do that. So I just, I want to make note because, and I typically do when I see that, because we always pass it by, right? We just place all those on file, but I think these teachers need, sixty-six, I won't recognize them by name. But I think we need to note that our teachers are doing the right thing, they're trying to get better, and it's all, like I said, for our students. So I just want to make sure we brought that out. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Very briefly, as you know, we had an election, and Commissioner Awad was nice enough to fill in again when we had one of the commissioners retire. And it's our privilege to now to just give you this certificate of appreciation, Kathy, because I know you have so many, so many outside activities and jobs, but you really have been an invaluable member of this board. And we really appreciate everything that you do for us, and I know you'll continue to do that for us. So it just says, "Certificate of Recognition and Appreciation Honoring Your Service, Dedication, and Commitment to the Students of Waterbury." And I know you're going to be coaching, continue to coaching, and really being with our students. So thank you very much. There's no executive session this evening. Commissioner Stango?
Thank you. The item number ten, Committee on School Personnel, ten point one, the appointment of the K-212 Fine Arts Supervisor. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Holly Maxon as the K-212 Fine Arts Supervisor, effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Ruffin?
It gives me great pleasure to recommend Ms. Holly Gillis for the new Fine Arts K-12 Curriculum Supervisor. This is a very valuable position, but I'm also honored that she is going to be taking a major lead in restoring to our fine arts program a level of excellence that I believe that we are lacking in our district currently. So Ms. Gillis has also taught visual arts and a choral teacher at Johnson County Public Schools in Four Oaks, North Carolina. She is an excellent musician by her own right, and she was a flautist, she is a composer, and she has served at Waterbury Arts Academy teaching digital music. She joins us with a very strong passion for teaching students, all students, and for strong communication skills, and has a very deep connection with marketing and with making certain that our students have an articulated program that will allow them from elementary, middle, and high school to really develop strong fine arts in the district. So it's an honor to recommend her to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagano?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Being in the Fine Arts Department and as supervisor, she will also be reporting to Mr. Darren Schwartz, who is our Chief Academic Officer.
Thank you, I appreciate it. President Brown, Vice President Harvey, Commissioners, and Dr. Ruffin, I could not be more thrilled to accept this position as your Fine Arts Supervisor for the District of Waterbury Public Schools. I look forward to working with all stakeholders to ensure that our students are achieving high goals in Waterbury, and to elevate our fine arts curriculum while supporting the common core of state standards with all of our students. I could not be more thrilled, and I thank you all very, very much. I also thank people who came out to support me tonight, old friends, colleagues, and who I consider new friends, that they could stand. Thank you very much, I appreciate all the support and all the support from Central Office. Thank you.
Best wishes.
Holly is also going to be attending a performance this evening, and that group will actually perform with our students here for our talent show in March. And as a result of that, you know, there's already a connection, because what we would like to do moving forward is to have our students in Waterbury audition for parts in that musical, and it's anti-bullying, it's an anti-bullying play musical, and our students will actually be auditioning so that next year, when people come to see the show, it will be students in Waterbury who will be performing it. And that's where she's going tonight to attend, so that we could forge those relationships and begin the audition process after March of next year, so that our performance in the following October will be Waterbury Public School students.
Awesome. Great, we have a lot of talent here. Okay, next, Commissioner Stango?
Thank you, Madam President and Board Members. For the record, item ten point two was incorrectly titled on the agenda. The correct title of the appointment is Director of Pupil Services. Therefore, ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends the approval of the appointment of Catherine L. Gabrielson as the Director of Pupil Services, effective immediately, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Ruffin?
It's an honor to recommend Catherine Gabrielson as our new Director of Pupil Services for Waterbury. Catherine comes with an extensive background in special education as a teacher, as well as a coordinator and a specialist and supervisor and director. She began her career in preschool special education teacher in Fairfax County Public Schools in Virginia. She relocated to Connecticut where she's worked as a teacher in special education, as well as, following that, the Connecticut Children's Medical Center School in Newington, Connecticut. She was previously employed in New Haven Public Schools as a developmental specialist, and she was later promoted to Supervisor of Special Education. From there, she became Director of Special Education in Ensenia, and it is indeed an honor to have her. She is coming from the Special Education and Pupil Services Department in Shelton Public Schools. I think it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for us here in Waterbury that she has agreed to serve as our special, as our Director of Pupil Services. As you can hear, we have a lot of support here in our audience as well. They were kind of celebrating before this vote, so it's an honor to recommend to you the Director of Pupil Services for Waterbury, Catherine Gabrielson.
Please call the vote. Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagano?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes.
Congratulations.
President Brown, Vice President Harvey, Superintendent Ruffin, Commissioners, Mrs. Genoa, Genoa, and Ms. O'Brien, community members and department staff, thank you all for this incredibly exciting opportunity. I am absolutely beyond thrilled to be coming to the Waterbury Public Schools as your Director of Pupil Services. In addition to my work in public education, I am also the president-elect of the Connecticut Council for Administrators in Special Education, and just yesterday was working with the State Department of Education and the State Education Resource Center and the Connecticut Parent Advocacy Center to plan a leadership forum specifically geared to help administrators in special education improve partnerships and relationships with families. I start December ninth. I invite you both to come in that week and have a conversation with me about your concerns with our department and our students. You're very welcome. I look forward to working with all of you. I look forward to working with this incredible department that greeted me so warmly this evening. Thank you very much for all of your support.
Thank you.
Also, as we continue to structure and to create a learning environment and supportive environment for all of our schools, it's also important to note that just as the Supervisor of Fine Arts will report to our Chief Academic Officer, Mr. Schwartz, our Director of Pupil Services will report to Dr. Rodriguez as our Deputy Superintendent.
Ten point three, Commissioner Stango?
Ten point three, regarding the appointment of pre-K through eighth grade principal at Gilmoreton School. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of Christina M. Moore as the pre-K eighth Principal at Gilmoreton School, effective January second, 2020, respectfully submitted, and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dr. Ruffin?
It's an honor to recommend Ms. Christina M. Moore as the new Principal of Gilmoreton Elementary School. Ms. Moore comes to us with experience as a pre-K eighth Principal, and she resides in Waterbury, her children are in school here in Waterbury, and very importantly, she wanted to return in Waterbury, and when we had an opportunity for that to happen, it's a needed honor to recommend her. She has extensive experience and a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology, a Master of Science in Special Education with a minor in learning disabilities. And she is the sixth year in educational leadership from Southern Connecticut University. She has had experience and continues to as a school district and community-based administrative services and SRBI chairperson, PPT chairperson, extensive experience that I believe will be a strength to her as a principal here, but also as creating supports that we need for our children in our schools. She has experience and a passion working in urban education, and it is an honor to recommend her to you as the Principal of Gilmoreton.
Thank you. Commissioner Awad?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pagano?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, congratulations.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that Ms. Moore is here this evening. Ms. Moore will be joining us in January in the interim. I am pleased that Ms. Lisa Ariola will be serving as the interim principal at Gilmoreton. Ms. Ariola is multi-talented. She is going to be a plus to be able to work with the current administration at Gilmoreton. Until such time as Ms. Moore arrives in the district, there will be a transition period where they will work together, and then Ms. Ariola will assume her permanent role as a very strong support to Willby High School. But in the interim, she will serve as the Principal of Gilmoreton, because she already has the experience as a principal, and I think will bring great strength in the interim until Ms. Moore arrives in the district. Also, some other moves, and I don't know if any of the new hires are in the district, but if they are, I don't know if Ms. Eckler is here this evening. I know she started working today as the ELA Secondary English Language Arts Supervisor, so today was her first day. You've already approved her, but I didn't know if she was here to be recognized. We're also very pleased that Mr. McCaslin has started as the interim principal of Westside, and we've already had our Commissioners Network meeting, our first one, he was present for that. We're also very pleased that Ms. Burns has, will be starting as the State Street Principal. We're also pleased that Kathleen Farucci has already started as the Program Supervisor for the Academic Academy, and I can't wait to share the next steps in the Academic Academy with you in future meetings. Also, Ms. Lori Eldridge has started as the Principal of Washington. And also, we have Ms. Inez Ramirez, who is currently serving as the interim principal of Washington, while that position has been posted. So I'm pleased that all of our staff has begun their process. Dr. Michelle Baker has begun her work at Willby High School. It's going to be great having she and Mr. Joe Begnall teamwork in serving as principals and assistant principals and as leaders at Willby High School. And so I'm expecting some great things to continue to happen for our district, as these moves have already taken place.
Great.
Great. Okay. The consent calendar. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent calendar? Okay. 11.1, request approval of a college facility, request reservation agreement with Nogatuck Valley Community College. 11.2, request approval of a memorandum of understanding program acknowledgement with Connecticut Military Department for Starbase, Connecticut. 11.3, request approval of the Board of Education's 2020 meeting schedule. 11.4, request approval of Amendment 2 to the agreement with St. Vincent's Special Needs Center, Inc. for education services to children with disabilities. 11.5, request approval to apply for the following Connecticut State Department of Education grants: Title III Grant, Bilingual Education Grant, and Immigrant Children and Youth Education Grant. 11.6, request approval of the submission of the 2019-2021 Consolidated Two-Year Federal Grant application. 11.7, request approval of a professional services agreement with J.C. Vending and Distribution, LLC to supply and deliver after-school snacks to various schools. 11.8, request approval of the submission of the Connecticut State Department of Education 2020 Alliance and Priority School District Grants applications. 11.9, request approval in agreement with Dudes Solutions for Facility Management Software. 11.10, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 11.11, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendars, read items 11.1 through 11.11.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Number 12, no items were removed. Number 13, Committee of the Whole, Vice President Harvey.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 13.1, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of the Whole recommends the request of Willby Alumni Association to name the Willby High School's swimming pool in honor of Gilman Gil Seer be approved. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I don't know if Mr. Seer left, but congratulations. 13.2.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Item 13.2, the Committee of the Whole recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the appointment of Sue Jada Wykoff as the Department of Education's representative to the Greater Waterbury Cable Council to fill the unexpired term of Nancy Vaughn from November 22nd, 2019 through June 30th, 2020. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Superintendent's notification to the board.
Motion received and placed on file, Superintendent's notification to the board, items 14.1 through 14.8.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 15, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. I wanted to give our student representative an opportunity. How's school going, Sabrina? Tell us what school you are. Tell the public.
I go to Willby High School, and I'm a junior currently, and to be honest, it's going really great.
Good.
Way better than it was going last year.
Wonderful.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, and I'm doing better, too, and everything's going great.
Great. You know, we'd love to hear if there's any concerns or any issues that are coming out through the other councils in the district, so maybe we'll have an opportunity for you and the other students who are going to be part of the board to maybe bring some things to the board that we should be aware of. So we'll work on that.
All right.
Okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other finished, unfinished business? Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President, through you. We spoke kind of briefly, but I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Kathy for all the work she had done here. She's been a tremendous Republican. There's very few of us in this city. So anytime one of my fellow Republicans, the eight of us in town, can do something, I really appreciate. Been a credit to the party, a credit to this board, and a credit to this city. Thank you very much.
Bravo.
Thank you. I'd like to also wish Catherine Awad luck and success, especially as she's coaching the Bulldogs. I don't know if anyone on the board noticed for the last year and a half, she's kind of been a Bulldog on the board, but we will probably miss that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanstone.
Thank you, Madam President. Just like Kathy, always trying to cut in front of me. Since she, I guess, the second time around.
Lose my phone number.
Oh, I have that. You actually aren't speed dial. If you noticed, the first time around, she sat next to me. That didn't last long. They had to put Juanita between the two of us so we would play nice, but Kathy and I actually see each other quite a bit, not that she's coaching especially, but I do happen to show up at a couple Crosby basketball games along the way. She's going to do a great job there, we know, but I agree with Jason seeing I'm one of those eight Republicans. She's been a great addition to this board. Her chairing of the Finance Committee really brings out everything we need to look at. It's a big undertaking, and I know she puts a lot of hard work in on that, and she makes sure we then look at all the right things. So Kathy, thank you, and I haven't seen my email with the basketball schedule, so if you could please take care of that.
I'll send you the practice schedule, too.
You did last year. Thank you, Madam President.
Juanita.
I can't let all the Republicans speak. It's been an honor, a pleasure, Kathy. You know, you've taught me a lot of things, and you've helped me out tremendously.
Forget them.
Good luck in your next endeavor.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Commissioner Sweeney?
Just very briefly, Kathy, enjoy some well-deserved time to yourself.
It won't be long.
Commissioner Awad?
Commissioner Pagano.
Oh, Commissioner Pagano.
This is brief. I know where you live, and I got tracking technology following you everywhere. Don't go far. I know where you're at. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
You mean La Tava La Restaurant? Oh, no.
I'm not home up the rest of the street.
And a couple of those stops in between.
Vice President Harvey.
Yes, thank you. I know I sent you an email or a text message a few weeks ago because I wasn't sure whether you were going to appear. I thought it was the last meeting, so I said, well, maybe she may not appear, but I just wanted to thank you the second time around for all that you've done, you know, on the board. It's been a pleasure working with you. But I'll see you again. I wish you a lot of luck, but take care of those Crosby Bulldogs for me. All right. Thank you, and good luck.
Dr. Ruffin.
Commissioner, thank you for everything that you've done, and thank you for the support and also sending me occasional text messages, causing me to just keep going. I really appreciate that, and thank you very much. Wish you the very best.
Thank you.
I know where to find you, too.
Like I said, La Tava La Restaurant. Commissioner Awad?
So I would just like to tell you two things. One, I am honored to be able to take on the role as, to avoid conflict of interest, a volunteer coach of the freshman team at Crosby Boys Basketball, where today we had 32 freshmen sign up to try out, which I thought was really exciting.
That's good.
So I'm very pleased to be able to continue to work with some of the students in Waterbury. I will tell you that earlier today, I had the opportunity to attend the Governor's First Workforce Development Council, and I'm very pleased to tell you that I've been named to the Education Committee, where I'll serve with the likes of, pardon me, what I see, Cindy Bigelow, the president of Bigelow T., Peter Bakewell, the president of NBC Sports, Marco Jakian, the head of the Board of Regents, President Katsoulias from UConn, Miguel Cardona, the Commissioner of Education, and Maria Pero Simmons, the superintendent of Unified School District 1. So I'll be around. I'll certainly be at the forefront of seeing what workforce and education is going to be doing under Governor Lamont, and you know that I'm coming back here to make sure that we get to pilot everything we come up with. To Dr. Ruffin, keep up the good work. Your energy and enthusiasm and willingness to rock the boat, keep it up. And to the rest of you, please lose my phone number. No, and I say that with injustice because I've made some very good friendships here, and again, I'm very, very pleased to have been asked by the mayor to serve a second time, which means I guess I did okay the first time. And again, it's been a privilege and an honor to help drive the curriculum and work towards making sure that our students leave this school district in a better place than when they got here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. 16, other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business? Somebody want to?
Yeah. You all said? Okay. He's just yawning. Okay, I just wanted to mention, it was mentioned that the CAE convention was attended. I understand it's very successful, and just wanted to report that Elizabeth Brown has been elected as Vice President of CAE, so I think we need a round of applause for that. And I'd like to also mention, we had our Advisory Committee meeting, CHRO Advisory Committee meeting, yesterday. I'm trying to see if we get those announcements or that to appear on the Waterbury website and also our website, Waterbury Education. I want to thank our NAACP, I call them the award-winning NAACP members of the NAACP Youth Council who attended, and shared information and their feelings about hiring of Black and Latino educators. I feel it was important to invite them because there are times when, you know, they're here information and it's not correct, and so I have invited them to attend our meetings and to have a seat at the table because it's important to have a seat at the table. So I want to just thank them for attending and look forward to working with them more often. I also want to thank Dr. Ruffin, Lee Powell, and trying to think of other folks that were there that were there to share this information with them. So looking forward to relationship, have a relationship with them, and more students to be involved, you know, in the process. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to mention that as being on the CAE Executive Committee, we had a meeting with the Dalio Foundation that I know you've seen in the paper. It's a foundation that really is committed to a focus on helping disengage students, disconnected students, kids who are, you know, on a trajectory, quite frankly, not to succeed in high school, and it's very exciting. They're putting 20 million for the next five years, and the state is going to be putting 20 million. So Kathy, I think there's some synergy there, absolutely, so we can kind of make sure that, you know, we're leveraging all those, you know, opportunities for our students, so I'm thrilled that you're going to be on the governor's workforce because I think we can really put our heads together and really do some really good things, so that's very exciting. Congratulations. So that is really good, and I just want to remind Board members, November 26, Tuesday, here at the library, CAE Nick Carusa will be doing an orientation, roles and responsibilities for new board members. We have one, Rocco Orso, but I think it's good to remind ourselves, you know, what our role is as a board, and I think we've come a long way, working in a very bipartisan way in terms of moving the district forward. So I look forward to that. I hope you all can make it on November 26. Thank you.
Kathy's still, that's part of the turn.
She's going to be gone.
She's still on the clock.
I'll be in the Bahamas, attending the Battle for Atlantis.
All right.
She should probably come. What's old is new again.
I know, exactly, Charles.
But I'm going to a basketball camp.
There's no executive session this evening. Could I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
On favor?
Aye.
And happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
See you next week.